All right. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting for one topic only. Assistant Mayor, would you lead us through the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Russell, could we have the roll call, please? Counselor Assar.
Here.
Counselor O'Hern.
Counselor Stone.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Dameron.
Here.
Counselor Zulo.
Here.
Counselor Kier.
Counselor Klosky.
Here.
Counselor Pope.
Mayor Lovett.
Here. Counselor Pope will be with us shortly. He's just delayed. Counselor O'Hern cannot make it due to work. So I don't believe we have any agenda changes. So this is going to be a one-hour meeting because we have the Planning Board coming in after us. So we're going to have to stick to a schedule. We do have on the agenda Citizens Forum. That would be for a non-agenda item. So if there's anybody here that would like to speak to a non-agenda item, and the agenda being this one issue, whether or not to sustain the governor's vetoes. Okay? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Now, the process will be this. I'm just going to give a quick review of what's happened since our last discussion on this, and then I'm going to give you an update, you, the council, and the public, on some more recent findings I've had today. And then we'll have questions amongst the council. There was Mr. Herndon. He was from NHSEA. That's New Hampshire Sustainable Energy Association. I had offered to be here to answer any questions because he could not make the Energy Advisory Committee meeting, which happened on September 6th. I did accept his offer, and he said he would be here, but I don't see him yet. And I did also ask a member of the Office of Strategic Initiatives to come here to answer questions as well. They could not attend, but if there is a burning question that the council has that I think that they could answer, I have a cellphone number. I can step out and call and get the answer for you. Once we have had a discussion, then the public is more than welcome to come up and share what they have on their minds, or share something that they have, a response that they have to what we've talked about. And then by 7:00 PM, we will have made a decision on whether to override or sustain the governor's vetoes, at least not that we can do it, but that we can advise our representatives what our position is. In addition, now that Counselor Pope is here, he is the council member that has been appointed to the Energy Advisory Committee. Once I go over my updates, then I would like to have you talk about that Energy Advisory Committee meeting. And then we'll have our discussion, followed by the public's input. So our last meeting was August 22nd, I believe, and we started the discussion, but we all realize that this is a very complex issue, and it warranted a focus time period that we could really delve into this deeper. And it also would give us the opportunity to have the Energy Advisory Committee meet, and as our committee that is supposed to be advising us on energy-related issues, it was important to have them meet and do their work at the committee level. So that has happened. I have since shared with the council all of the information that I have attained from New Hampshire Sustainable Energy Association and OSI, Office of Strategic Initiatives, and anything else that I've come along. And that has been shared with the council, and they've had the opportunity to read it. However, like I said, it's a very complex issue, and I still have questions, but I have some answers to some questions that I have had that I wanted to share with you. So we'll start with SB 365. It is the most contentious of the two. What you may not have gleaned from the information that I shared with you earlier is that SB 365 is on top of legislation that's already passed to help biomass energy plants continue operating. SB 129 was passed. The governor didn't sign it, but it went into legislation. And that dealt with the state's renewable portfolio standard, which, in layman's terms, basically increases the value of their energy certificates so that the operating plants get more money. So it helps their operating costs. That was supposed to impact them in 2017, 18, and 19. So we're halfway through that phase, and it's not enough, frankly. They still need to be subsidized because they're just not making enough money to cover their operating costs. So that's what SB 365 is about. There was a question as to why did the governor support legislation to help the biomass plant in Berlin, the Burgess biomass plant? The reason behind that was they did not reap the benefits of SB 129. So they weren't impacted by that legislation that was supposed to help increase their revenue. And they're also in the midst of diversifying. So they're looking at other things that they can do other than to just be a biomass power plant. They are looking at using their excess heat to heat the city of Berlin. They're looking at sustainable farming. They're looking at greenhouses. So in the governor's eyes, they have represented a willingness to try to change their business model so that they can operate in the black. And then the Schiller biomass facility, it's not a biomass facility alone. It's a 40-megawatt energy plant. A third of it's biomass, and they were affected positively by SB 577. So the issue is not whether to pull the rug out from underneath the biomass plants. It's just how they've been running is not sustainable. And if we continue to do things the same as they have been since the 1980s, they've been subsidized by the tune of about $2 billion in the state of New Hampshire. So if you're looking at it from a global perspective, and you're seeing what technology is coming down the pike, biomass as a power plant, an energy source for electricity, is not efficient. And the technology that's coming down the pike is going to even make it less desirable. Having said that, the forestry groups are very concerned because they need a market for their low-quality wood. And 70% to 80% of New Hampshire's forest is comprised of low-quality wood. And the question that you might be asking yourself is, why is that so? Is that the case across the nation? Why is it 70% to 80% low-quality wood? The response that I got from OSI was because of the 20th century's need for wood for the pulp industry and the paper mill industry. It created a situation, or helped to create, the situation in which the majority of your forests in New Hampshire are low-quality. So the low-quality wood right now feeds not only the biomass facilities, but the wood pellet and wood chip manufacturers, wood pellet manufacturers, and people who burn wood for heating their homes. So there is a market already. It's just, the fear is that if the biomass plants go offline, then that market's going to be severely reduced. Where do we send the low-quality wood? And then finally, I spoke with Director Sweet this afternoon because, if you recall, Assistant Director St. Pierre had sent a letter to our state Senator Hennessy requesting that she support overriding SB 365. And the reason for that is because in Clermont, we rely on ash from the biomass facilities to mix into the sludge to create a product that can be used as fertilizer. The ash, and I did ask, well, what about the ash from the wood chip facility up at the county home? And the answer, it's not sufficient because the carbon level's not high enough to mix with the sludge to do the job of odor control and then make it into compost, so fertilizer. So there is a cost. Right now, the city is relying on the ash from the Springfield biomass facility. And right now, what we are able to dispose of without transporting anything anywhere, it's 39 a ton. If we couldn't break it down and use it for something, we would have to transport it to Lebanon or somewhere else, and there's a transportation cost. So your increased cost of managing that, it goes up by 94K. Now, we're also getting from the smaller communities around us revenue because they are sending their, now I'm not sure, and I wish you were here, but either they're sending their sludge here to be broken down, or we are selling to them the compost, the fertilizer. Either way, it comes to 35K. I'm sorry, I don't have that. So you've got a 35K revenue that we would lose, plus our operating costs would increase 94K because we would have to change how we dispose of the sludge. So that is a difference of how we're currently operating of 191,000 a year. So I feel it's my responsibility to fully make you aware of all of the facts. I'd like to bring it over to Counselor Pope to give us an overview of what happened at the Energy Advisory Committee. Then we'll have questions among the council, and then input from the public.
I think the letter the council received is pretty sufficient background. We had a good deal of discussion, a lot of philosophical discussion, not just on this issue, but on several other things, and very productive discussion. It actually is leading to a lot more than just this, and it was very appreciated. We had a divided vote on that. I believe it was 4-2 on whether to support this. And the Senate Bill 365, we realize that there are going to be some changes in the future, that we can't keep supporting this, and that there's got to be better energy sources found. I don't think you can just shut them off. I think the discussion was you just can't shut them off lock, stock, and barrel within one year, things like this, but that there's got to be a better way found, and that this legislation only lasts for about two to three years. That was also brought up. One of the biggest problems we had with 365 was the tacking on of the waste energy incinerator, the appendage, as we called it. So we did recommend overriding the veto, but we recommended that with reluctance because of that appendage that was added, to be fair. The 446, we saw that as a bill that has the potential to help New Hampshire catch up to neighboring states. We discussed Vermont and some of the good things they're doing there. And even if we can't do that as a state, we have looked at this as an idea for our community to at least start looking forward on these kinds of things. So there was some really good discussion, different philosophies, but I think we all agree that there's a lot of ways we can do things better. And the input from everybody was certainly appreciated. I think the respectfulness of everybody at the table was very good. We agreed to disagree, and when we disagreed, we did so respectfully. And that's about what I can say. We submit our letter of finding to you guys, and I would have to say that at this point, it is up to the pleasure of the council how we go from there.
Okay. Any comments to what either Counselor Pope or I have said? Like to hear from the public?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have the five-minute rule in effect tonight?
Yes. Who would like to speak? Yes.
Hi.
You have to come to the podium.
I'm Katie Lee Joy from Charlestown, and I just wanted to ask if I could speak once the other people from Clermont speak. Would that be possible?
Let me ask the council.
Okay.
And thank you for bringing it to our attention that you're from Charlestown.
Okay. So do you want me to go sit down now and then wait after Clermont speaks? Okay. Thank you.
And it'll be primarily driven by time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, to respect everybody's time and our time limitations tonight, if people do speak, if it's not just the same thing, if you have something new to add that hasn't already been said, that would be great. So who, anybody who would like to speak? Yes, Mrs. McKenzie? What?
As an Energy Committee person?
Certainly.
Yes, you are.
Okay. Great.
Rebecca McKenzie, Ward 2. And on the Energy Advisory Committee, I could not make the meeting the other night, but I felt very thankful that my thoughts were considered. So I want to thank the committee. There were some questions around, you mentioned that the foresters had said that 70% to 80% of our forests are low-quality wood that would be used in biomass. And I just, I have umbraged.
Not that I'll, just clarify. All I'm saying is 70% to 80% of the forests are low-quality wood, not that it's all going to biomass.
Right. Right. But that enables the forestry community to label that wood as biomass. And so I'm just really concerned about the commodification of our forests as potentially biomass material because they are so much more to us than that percentages of looking at our forests and wildlife as the habitat that that creates and the recreational opportunities. I also want to point out that there are other ways that our sludge can be transformed into fertilizer. It's not just wood ash that can do that. It's a little more expensive, but I think that that's an important point here, that there are other means whereby we can transition our sludge into fertilizer. And I was confused by the statistic that the cost to transport our sludge, should we decide to export it, was $94,000. Is that right?
Yes.
No.
Oh.
It'd be $105 a ton. That would be, according to Mr. St. Pierre, $94,135 more in today's cost.
Oh, I see. I see. I see. Okay. So that was my question because the $94,000 cost and the $35,000 revenue just didn't add up to the 191,000 that you are talking about. That would be cost to the city, 191,000?
29. I'm hearing 191. I'm sorry.
191,000 is what I thought you said was going to be the cost to the city.
129.
Okay.
I heard the same. That's what I wrote down.
Did you?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know why I would have said that, but.
Well, so it's 129.
In my notes, it's 129.
Okay. Okay. So I just couldn't reconcile those figures. Okay. And I also want to say that I think though the vote was as recorded as 4-2, if you counted those, are you counting also the alternate vote? Is that how that worked? Because there are five committee members on the.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember that. It could also be 3-2.
Yeah, I think it's 3-2.
Mike has the minutes on that.
And there was just this good article that I distributed a little bit earlier with the help of Dore to talk about, that was published today in the New Hampshire Union Leader, that does talk about important challenges and possible, some of the reasons why you would want to support the veto of SB 365. And I'm really thankful that the Energy Advisory Committee was on board with overriding the SB 446, which promotes net metering in our state. That's a really important point. So anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Does somebody else from the public would like to speak? Yes.
Thank you for having this special session to hear the concerns. Did you say that you would consider hearing Katie talk?
Once we got through Clermont.
Okay. I just wanted to put in a plug. She is the chairman of Working on Waste, of which I'm a board member, and she consolidates our position on a statewide level and sends our position out. So I would ask that she be allowed to speak because she has more coherent information than I do on working on waste, is the group. One of the things that I'm concerned about is this 365, is that we've got wheel vibrators stuck in there. And by having wheel vibrators stuck in there, we make this plant on Grissom Lane perhaps economically viable. We do not want to see that plant come back online. Every time I pass that place, like once a day, I look up there and I see the blacktop with the grass coming up through it, and it just cheers me up that that place is closed and it's not spewing. I believe you've done some instrumental work in this community on lead. That place puts out hundreds of pounds of lead, and lead is measured, the damage it does, in micrograms. So what is hundreds of pounds of lead coming out of that smokestack? We can't afford in Clermont to have that plant come back online if we care about our About the second or third sentence that you said in your opening remarks, they can't make it on their own. I think that we need to get out of government subsidies to prop up industries. They can't make it on their own. Well, if a business here on Pleasant Street can't make it on its own, it closes its door, and we get another one in, hopefully. So if they can't make it on their own, you know, this is a free-market economy. It's too bad. We don't need to prop them up. We don't need the clear-cutting that comes through, whether or not it's low-grade, whatever that means, low-grade wood. There are animals there. There are birds there. We just can't afford to be chopping up the forest to burn it for this inefficient way to manufacture electricity. And we certainly need to push green energy all that we can. I don't often find myself agreeing with a Republican governor, but I certainly was glad that he vetoed 365, and I hope that the veto is not overridden. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
I'm Meg Hurley from Ward 2. I just have a couple of quick comments. I went to watch the documentary Burned about biomass, and it made me sick to my stomach, what's going on. But I asked the founder and director of the Energy Justice Network, who was at this meeting, if the scrubbers on these stacks actually clean the air. And he said, no, there are no scrubbers anywhere that are cleaning the air. And we know that the particulate filth coming out of these stacks causes brain damage. It's not just lead, but just breathing, this stuff can cause brain damage. And we don't want, again, we don't want to do it to our children, and we don't want to do it to us. So that's something that really concerns me. This wheel vibrator thing is scary, and I hope that it never comes back. There are other ways to go. So anyway, that's all I had to say, but if you can watch the documentary Burned, you will think very differently about this whole concept that's being proposed in terms of burning biomass.
Okay. Just a moment. Mr. Herndon?
Yes.
Yes. So you've come all the way up here to answer some questions. Is there something that you've heard that you feel is not accurate?
Just a couple of small.
Could you come to the podium? Thank you.
So my name's Henry Herndon. I work for New Hampshire Sustainable Energy Association, and we're a statewide nonprofit. We're sort of the experts on all things New Hampshire-based renewable energy and sustainable energy. And this is actually the second time I've had the privilege of coming up to Clermont. I worked with Rebecca McKenzie a few months ago on a solar 101 with the Energy Committee. So I hope the Energy Committee will forgive me for disagreeing with them on this issue. Couple of quick points. So Sierra Club, who put together that Burned documentary, and some of those other organizations you reference are out-of-state organizations, and the Burn documentary is really focused on southern plantation, a very specific forestry practice in southern plantations that doesn't necessarily apply to New Hampshire's forestry industry. And New Hampshire-based groups like New Hampshire Sustainable Energy Association, the New Hampshire Society for the Protection of New Hampshire Forests, and the Audubon Society here, they all support Senate Bill 365 because of what they see as the sustainable forestry management practices and the economic benefits associated, both on the sort of input side, the timber industry and the tourism industry, and then the other sort of life cycle threads like the wood ash that is benefiting the city of Clermont. So New Hampshire-based organizations such as mine and those organizations support this bill in addition to 446 because we feel it is a key piece in creating a New Hampshire-based sustainable energy economy. The other quick point that I'd like to address, there was some reference to subsidies. And in the energy sector, I think that's a little bit of a red herring. All forms of energy have been subsidized one way or another. So we think of this as more of an investment in New Hampshire-based resources that are going to provide diversity, that are going to provide benefits to the economy here, and relieve some of our dependence on imported fuels. And a key piece here is those short-term costs that we're going to pay for all the benefits associated with the biomass industry here in New Hampshire. Those short-term costs, we're going to pay for those anyway down the line. So when you lose 100 megawatts of generation capacity that's in-state that has all those benefits, you have to make up for that somewhere else. And where you make up for that is in out-of-state capacity. So moving forward, I won't get into too much of the details, but the capacity market will make up that 100 megawatts by bidding to achieve more capacity in the future. That is likely going to come from out-of-state natural gas power plants, which we don't support either. So that's, you know, we don't get any of the benefits of local jobs from that, and we're relying on out-of-state fossil fuels in the future that are gonna, those costs are going to come back in a different way down the line in the forward capacity markets. So a couple of small points that I wanted to address, and I'm happy to answer any other questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You.
Yes? Yes?
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, yes. Mayor Lovett?
Yes.
There you are. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity. My name's Cornelia Sargent, Ward Two, and I appreciate the opportunity very much to speak, and also that the Energy Committee has met. I appreciate this special meeting. However, I feel, as you stated very clearly, Mayor Lovett, this is a complex issue. It's been a complex issue over several decades, and I'm very concerned that Claremont is going to be yet again buffaloed into something we don't fully yet understand. We know the costs of wheel abrater. We've been there. We don't want to go there again. Senate Bill 365 is a direct subsidy to the tune of, I believe, $18 million to the Concord Wheel Abrater, which makes the Claremont facility once again potentially viable. It includes trash incineration in the renewable energy portfolio. That is extremely dangerous, extremely dangerous, and no one knows that cost better than the citizens of Claremont. In addition, biomass incineration is not energy efficient. Seventy-five trees out of every hundred are wasted energy. Only 25 trees out of every hundred goes into electrical production. That is an enormous waste of resources, if indeed we can call these resources and not sacred relatives. The Maine example is, I think, directly on point. Maine passed a similar parallel subsidy, as others have pointed out. This industry has been subsidized over decades. It's not efficient. This is not a temporary And Maine passed a similar subsidy only two years ago. Some of the loggers and truckers are having to sue to collect their payments. These are multinationals that we are giving out $60 million of ratepayers' hard-earned money to. The seven biomass, the six biomass and the one Concord Wheel Abrater facility are not owned in-state. And it's pennies on the dollar that will go to loggers and truckers. Some of the loggers and truckers are literally having to sue to collect their payments in Maine. Some have gone out of business in the two years since this parallel bill passed in Maine. I'm very worried that Claremont is yet again going to be buffaloed into making a decision we don't fully understand, and that special interests are speaking much louder than the ordinary ratepayer who will pay the maximum burden of this cost. We pay twice. We pay with our rate, some ratepayers will pay through our utility bills, and all of us will pay through our health. And I would strongly, I kindly see the remainder of my time. I really hope you will include Katie LeJoy, who is a public health nurse who's done tremendous work in the statewide work on lead poisoning in children for decades, and been involved with this issue for a very long time, and is extremely knowledgeable. Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the council be okay with hearing Mrs. LeJoy's testimony? Mrs. LeJoy?
Hi. Yeah, I'm Katie LeJoy from Charlestown. I am a nurse. I've taken a lot of interest in incineration issues over the years, especially when wheel abrater was operating in Claremont. I have a handout for you, and I hope it's not too late to give you this because I realize you're going to vote, like maybe 20 minutes. I would really urge you to vote to sustain the governor's veto. This handout is called the Double Cost of Biomass Incineration, and basically, the incinerators that are being subsidized through the SB 365 are the biggest air polluters in nearly half of New Hampshire's counties. And not only is there pollution coming from these biomass and also the wheel abrater incinerator, I do have one statistic I want to tell you about wheel abrater, but it's going to be on the backs of ratepayers. And so here in Claremont, where you ever-source ratepayers are gonna, ever-source general service class customers will pay an additional $61.80 a year. The Unitil ratepayers, where wheel abrater is, they're going to be paying an extra $75.60 a year. This is based on the Public Utilities Commission. Their consumer advocate opposes SB 365 because he said we have to protect ratepayers. They're kind of lost in this big, all the noise being made about the need to subsidize the biomass. The other thing, so there's the pollution and the electric rates, and then there's this big issue of wheel abrater. And with all due respect to the Sustainable Energy Association, if you support this bill, you're supporting trash incineration, and you're saying it's renewable, and it's not. And it's not clean, and it's not renewable. This is a very bad development. It's really been under the radar in the press. It's been largely ignored by the press. When I've talked to a lot of politicians in the past month, a lot of them didn't even know wheel abrater was in there when they voted. Then they're saying, oh, we don't like wheel abrater, but they don't get it. This vote will put wheel abrater in a different column, and it's a very bad development. And one of the things that I found out, there was a wheel abrater report for 2017. It showed that over 80 pounds of lead were emitted into the air over Concord from just one of the boilers. Eighty pounds. It was 83 pounds. And like Jim said, lead is measured in micrograms, a millionth of a gram, and 80 pounds of airborne lead, that was just from one boiler. It's totally unacceptable. This is not clean energy, and biomass is not clean. So I would hope that the council choose not to sign on to this letter. Not to sign on to this letter that's being circulated around the state urging mayors of New Hampshire cities. Please chart your own path. Those of us who oppose this bill, want the legislators to sustain the veto, come back next year, really look at the economy in the North Country in a detailed way. Because like you said, this has been going on for, there's billions of dollars, and the people in the North Country aren't, they're not the ones benefiting from this. This is to help the investors, this money. And wheel abrater, you've got to go back to wheel abrater, they're a multinational corporation. They get paid to, they get paid for the waste that they burn. They get paid to take it. And to think that we're going to give them $8.1 million subsidies for just that incinerator, and then the total cost is about $68 million for all the incinerator in Concord and also the biomass. We're talking a lot of money here, and like Cornelia said, it's not, it's not going to the loggers, and it's going to be going to the investors. And I really hope that you do not sign on to this letter because it's, it's going to send a message to the state that you support wheel abrater, number one. And thank you very much. I do have this handout. Like I said, I, for voting in a couple of minutes, but it talks about the pollution and the cost.
Is there one more? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Is there anything you want to highlight on that?
Well, basically, it's called the Double Cost of Biomass Incineration. It would hit pocketbooks in our health. The trash incinerator in Merrimack is the second biggest air polluter in the county. This bill subsidizes more than half of our state's top 13 air polluters. There's a listing of all the pollutants and possible health effects. It's very high-cost energy, and as I said, the Unitil people, $75.60 a year on average, and ever-source general service class customers, $61.80 a year on average. They're shocking numbers, and I really hope you think carefully about this because if you go with this bill, you're sending a message to the public that burning garbage is good for the environment, and it's not. Thank you very much. Yeah?
You say the Merrimack Trash Incineration is the second biggest polluter in Merrimack County. Do you know what the first, the number one?
I would think it's the coal plant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I was just curious.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for providing this. Is there anybody else who hasn't spoken? Mr. Montenegro?
Ernest Montenegro, Ward One. And ditto to everyone here who is for sustaining the veto. Governor Sununu, who is Republican and I'm not, and so I find myself on an interesting side. But the word or phrase biomass is similar to me as zero sort. They're nice-sounding words, and there's a lot of bad stuff behind it. And we moved here in 1990, and the struggle and the fight against wheel abrater, wheel abrater was nasty and divisive, and it seemed like a gift from heaven when they left, and it seems like a terrible idea that it's possible they will return. And if they do, I would probably decide to leave because that fight lasted about 10-plus years, and as I said, it was 30 years, yeah, more. But 10 years of the time we were here, or more. But nonetheless, it was nasty, and it just was an unpleasant experience. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else from the public? I think I saw Mr. Stapleton's hands first.
Walt Stapleton, Ward Three. I'm a candidate for the New Hampshire Legislature, District Five, and I'm not going to give an opinion or a preference on override or sustain, but I wanted to relate that I saw the movie on September 6, Burned: Wood, the New Coal. And there were a lot of interesting things there. One of the things, it wasn't just in the South they covered these plants, but Michigan, Pennsylvania, Florida, Louisiana, and I think there was even some mention of Western and even foreign figures coming out of that film. It was a very good film. One of the things that really struck me was the lack of efficiency. The film claimed that wood burning is 25% efficiency. 25% efficiency. I thought that was rather low. Now, maybe there's other figures out there, but even if it were 50%, that efficiency rate is what makes it not sustainable from a number of economic points. And when we hear about difficulties in Maine with similar law and similar circumstances, and truckers and loggers with difficulty in getting paid, you can connect the two to make the point that that 25% or more or less of efficiency is really a heavy weight on the efficiency, the economic efficiency of these plants. And it occurs to me, because I burn wood, and I have a boiler that's a Tarm gasification boiler, high efficiency, operates at about 1,800 degrees. Now, when you take trees and you cut them down, and then you chip them up, and then you truck them, and then you pile them up, there's no place for drying. There's no time or capacity to drive out the moisture. And when you put these into the boiler, into the fire, you have to use a great deal of energy to drive out the moisture before you actually sustain the recapture of heat. And I know this from my own experience, if you're burning wet wood, that you're going to get smoke, tar, creosote, and little heat because your heat's used to drive out the moisture. An example of that is where you have these outdoor boilers, and the wood is stored outside, and then the people throw the wood in wet, creates an awful smoke situation that drifts all over the neighborhood or neighborhoods. That's just the condition of trying to burn wet wood, or at least wood that's not completely dried out, not efficient. Now, in the Michigan plant, Lansing, Michigan, the public was in a great deal of outcry over that plant because they couldn't get enough wood to sustain the burn, and so they began to look at bringing in used railroad ties from the West and the Midwest. The railroad ties can burn hot, used railroad ties, but they're also a hazardous material. Railroads can't just throw these things anyplace because used railroad ties with the creosote in them are classified as a hazardous material. And here, we're going to put those in the plant. What I'm getting at is that because of low efficiency, if you have to use some supplemental fuel sources in order to get the heat range up to drive off the moisture, or the woodstocks are insufficient, then you have to go to these things like railroad ties. So I thought it was very, very interesting. The film covered a lot more detail and a lot more effect about environment and air quality, CO2, heavy metals, and I'm not going to go into that because that's not an area that I have a great deal of knowledge about, but it sounds like these folks could comment more on that with a good knowledge base of that sort of thing. Though I just wanted to make that point, that I'm not satisfied that the efficiency of 25% plus or minus is a sustainable thing to base a future, long-range future economic plans on, and that's going to cost the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak or hasn't spoken? Yes.
Donna Montenegro, Ward One. First of all, Mayor Lovett, I want to thank you for your concern about the fiscal responsibility in terms of the cost to Claremont because I think that is important. And I think that we have a huge dilemma here in terms of energy and how we use it and what we use. I mean, I always thought that biomass was a great thing. I thought that it was a way that, you know, we could use the environment in a positive way. But after watching that documentary, I had a very different view. First of all, it surprised me that a huge portion of the wood that was generated from the forests in the South, mostly in the South, is sent to Europe. It's not even used in this country. And so it's benefiting other places and investors primarily. And the other thing, the other takeaway I had was, which was a very eye-opening takeaway, was that when you burn the wood that has been sequestering the mercury and chemicals, you are re-emitting this bad stuff into the environment again. I never even thought about that, and that's like, man, that's an important thing. I mean, what do you do? Beto O'Rourke said the highest job market right now for people is in solar and wind, and why aren't we going there? I mean, as a country, you know, we need to focus on what really is a possible alternative. I mean, we're going to have to bite the bullet sooner or later, and our youths unfortunately are inheriting a world where they have to deal with a huge problem. Climate change is a huge problem, and biomass is not the answer, unfortunately. It directly affects us because we have the wheel abrater plant, and I understand it was purchased at a very low price recently, $38,000, that's what I heard. And does that mean that somebody can invest and make something that we don't want here in Claremont again and have to deal with it? So I also echo all of these people who are against vetoing this bill, and I am very surprised that I'm on the side of our governor. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public who would like to speak who hasn't spoken? Yes.
I'm Roberta Hutchins from Ward 3, and I just wanted to place into the record the article from the union leader, if that's possible.
The one that's in front of us?
Yes. I was wondering if that's a possibility.
I guess Ms. Rosley can just make a note that we received this.
What is the one of the two?
Yes, yes.
I don't do work for.
You don't? Okay. All right.
I can mention it, and.
All right. Okay. All right. Well, thank you. I'm a member of the Energy Commission, and I feel it's important for me to come and represent my views, and as Scott did a great job speaking about the group as a whole. And I really would like to sustain the governor's veto on Bill SB 365. As a resident of Claremont, I think it's very important, and appreciate you looking at that and favorably. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who hasn't spoken yet tonight? Mr. Hernan, you had your hand raised. Are you going to respond to a comment that's?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Just a couple of quick things I'd like to respond to. So there's been a lot of talk about the investment, and I think it's a little misleading to think of it just going to the shareholders. So there was a study by Plymouth State University that looked at biomass industry and found 931 jobs in the state that would be at risk if these, if this veto were not overridden. And that translates to $234 million economy, part of our New Hampshire economy. So part of that, that's $7 million annually in taxes and fees to municipal and state government that would evaporate and would be shifted on to other tax-paying organizations and towns. And, and those are jobs that would be at risk. Another thing I wanted to respond to, again, this, this burn documentary, the plants in New Hampshire, they're not burning railroad ties, they're not burning, it's a much different form of biomass energy than what's referenced in those, in that documentary. And just want to reinforce again, the forestry organizations, New Hampshire Society, the Society for the Protection of New Hampshire Forests and the Audborn Society here are very much in favor of this bill, and they support the forestry practices associated with it. And yeah, that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, I think we've heard from everybody. Any? Nope, I'm sorry. Excuse me?
That's it.
Yeah. So I'd like to have the council make any comments or ask questions that you may have before we take a vote. Yes, Councilor Klosky?
I guess my only comment is we don't really have a lot of time to discuss this. We're being forced to vote in four minutes so we can move on. So I'm not terribly comfortable with it. My only comment would be, when we talk about the cost to the city as far as our sludge down at the wastewater treatment plant, that's actually an enterprise fund that would only be passed along to those uses of that. I use that for my business and my home. But that, in the overall picture of folks' health, doesn't matter to me, honestly. The increased cost will, it's the cost of doing business, they'll have to figure it out. I'm more concerned about public health. That's my only comment.
Okay. And I'm sorry you feel rushed, but.
I know.
It's, I asked the council if they had any questions or comments at the beginning, and the reality is we have a legislature that's going to convene on the 13th. Yes, Assistant Mayor Dameron?
Yeah, briefly, and I think probably we could intrude on our next committee by a few minutes if we needed to.
Yep.
Back and forth, certainly, I had not seen Vic St. Pierre's memorandum, and the cost, whether it's to an enterprise fund or the general fund, of $129,000 is a little bit staggering. And ordinarily, I'd be very, very hesitant to put that into play. But nowhere in the memo does it state that that's a guaranteed certainty if 365 is not overridden. It could be part of it, a little bit of it, maybe more of it, we just don't know. I don't know that that's a guaranteed number. I do find it something I don't know that I could really live with, and that's balancing all of the work that the citizens of Claremont did under the leadership of Mayor Lovett. And indeed, they'll be getting recognition for that from the EPA on Wednesday for the work on, yeah, lead, lead abatement. So how would I, in good conscience, vote to override the governor's veto and put the wheel operator plant spewing forth all of the lead that it spews, but it's not here in Claremont, it's in Concord? That wouldn't make me feel any better, I'm afraid. So my vote will be to sustain the governor's veto on 365.
And on 446?
446, I will vote to override.
Okay. Anybody else have any? Yes, Councilor Keir.
I would echo the same. I think that I don't agree with propping up companies for extended periods of time. I don't think this is a sustainable practice, and I don't agree with it as a renewable energy source. Clearly, if they can't make their business work, I don't think we should be funding them trying to figure out how to make it work. They need to adapt and overcome and change their business model and figure out how to make it work and be more, you know, focused on renewable energies. This isn't going to work, and we're going to eventually have to go this way at some point. So it's going to hurt no matter when we do it. So I think we have to bite the bullet and do it at some point, and the longer we put it off, the more health problems we're going to have associated with it.
Anybody else would like to say a few words? All right. Yeah, councilors?
I'm, I am not in favor of overriding the veto as far as the wheel operator goes. It's just the, the logging industry, I do feel, will suffer if the biomass plants are shut down due to the fact that that's, that's what, the biomass where they send the chips is what cleans up the forest from the logging operations because logging promotes growth, good logging practices. I just, I just had a piece of property logged, and 75% of the trees were rotten in the middle. So if the logger that did my, my logging didn't have a place to send that chips, it would have been left in the woods to just rot. And I mean, everybody knows rotting creates pollution too. So I just wanted to throw that out there that I'm, it makes me a little bit nervous.
Well, I think it's very unfortunate that somehow wheel operator was folded into SB 365. I think that's a disservice to many sectors of our state. But I think the Assistant Mayor and Councilor Keir spoke very eloquently, and Councilor Klosky, I believe, have all mentioned, we as a community, I think, have demonstrated our commitment to protecting the health of our citizens. And I'm, I understand the concerns of the forest industry, I think. And I also believe that there's technology that's, if it's not already available, it's coming down the pike, where there still will be a market for low-quality wood. It may not be the market that currently exists, but I think, I've read in different books, that we're on the precipice of a revolution in the energy sector, and it's going to be as disruptive as the Internet was. And meaning that everybody eventually is going to have the ability to generate electricity and connect to the grid. I think the governor has demonstrated the fact that he will support the biomass industry to a point. But when technology changes the lay of the land, companies to survive have to adjust their business models. And I think his demonstration of that with the Burgess Plant is indicative of the fact that he believes that there will continue to be a market. It may not be the same market, but the technology will also create new markets. So I'm in favor of sustaining the veto for SB 365 and overriding the veto for SB 446. Councilor Pope?
Understand the need for the wood burning plants up there. Don't like it, but I understand that for the forestry jobs. However, I think in this community, this SB 365. Yep, that's correct. Has once again become a moratorium on wheel operator and realizing the challenge it was to change the way that worked out there, I think I need to follow that moratorium with the people speaking. So I, as I said, the discussion was very strong and such, but I see where this is going for the community, and I think we need to sustain the veto for nothing else but the wheel operator aspect, and I do know people that work at that plant. So this is a hard vote. If you wanted me to step down because of that idea, I would, but that's where I feel it's gone. So I would have to sustain the veto on that because that was a community effort for several years.
Anybody else?
This is very difficult.
Yes, it is.
But all things considered, I probably make a few enemies, but whatever, I will sustain the vote for 365 and go the other way for the four, whatever.
446.
Yeah. It's a chance we have to take and hope that something will change, like you mentioned. That's the only thing we can hope for. It's not comfortable.
No.
Thank you.
I would concur.
Councilor Pope?
Are we going to be voting on these as two separate issues?
Yes. Okay. So what?
I would make, I would make a motion that this council vote to sustain the governor's veto on Senate Bill 365.
Second. Second. Okay, so the motion was made by Assistant Mayor Dameron and seconded by Councilor Keir. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So you're in the position of sustaining?
And now I would make a motion that this council support the override of Senate Bill 446, support the governor's veto. Let me say it right. That we support the override of the governor's veto of SB 446.
Is there a second? Second, second. Sorry. I think that was made by Assistant Mayor Dameron, seconded first by Councilor Keir. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. My last question to the council is, because it's a split vote, do you just want me to respond, communicate the council's position to the people who are facilitating the mayoral letter? That this is our position on each bill, and these are the reasons why in general terms? Or do you just want me to say that we're not going to join the mayoral letter at all since they combine both?
I think we just voted with two different votes. We have to send the report of both votes.
Okay.
And to make sure our delegation has, has had the same information.
Okay. So I'll CC the delegation. Okay. Anything else?
Move to adjourn. Second.
All right. So Assistant Mayor Dameron made the motion to adjourn. That was seconded by Councilor Stone. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, we're adjourned.